...
What?
Seventy-four.
November? Because you guys would have had two meetings in the same week. There's a void. Planning, yeah. November first is a Thursday. So there's planning. But then the first two, Jay, you would have had...
So you're ready to get started?
So they moved it back.
Yeah.
I know, I know, I told them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, ready?
All right, we're gonna get started. Good evening, and welcome to the Village Workshop on October 2nd, 2019. And we are gonna get into some business. How's everyone doing?
Jake's looking good today, look at Jake.
Okay. All right, so first item, we are gonna have the discussion around the accounting software review. And I would assume these young ladies are gonna...
Yes, I invited my awesome, awesome team here to come with me. So we are really looking to switch from Harris. You're, I think you're all on the page.
Yep.
We, you can see, we're just really not happy with them, and we're really ready to make a change.
When you say you're not happy with them, what, what are the...
What don't you like about them?
So the, when we, the customer service is just terrible. We, I mean, sometimes we're waiting like several days for an answer. And...
Months.
Months, yeah. And it's just, we're just ready, we were supposed to change it a few months ago. Wonder if it, Chris? When we were gonna talk about Williamson Law Book?
Before the budget year began.
Yeah. And then we ended up getting some not great feedback from some other clerks for that. And now we've done a little bit more research, and we're, we found a couple that we're really happy with. So we just wanted to kinda get that, put that in your minds that it's something that we'd like to do.
Is any of these a cost savings as well, or is it...
Initially, it's gonna be a little bit more expensive, but ultimately, it should save us a little bit of money. This will, this should also include payroll. So we'll be switching our payroll program too.
So we won't have an additional cost for payroll, this will just be...
We're hoping that's the way it'll roll. With Accufund, there would be savings of about $3,000 a year, just in payroll alone.
Okay.
Because we pay currently about $5,500 for payroll services. And going to the integrated with the new accounting program, with my analysis, it was about a $3,000 savings. But to speak more to why we really wanna change is, Harris is very antiquated. It doesn't, it's not easily accessible, it's not user-friendly. I've, I had to learn it myself, and I'm just kinda getting comfortable with, in it right now. And I know where to go to find what I need, but it's not simple. It, it doesn't allow for a lot of different reports that should be available to us, where...
Which is important.
And these programs do, yeah, exactly. These programs have them, like, if I need to do on expense analysis of a certain account, I can't do it by days or by months. I have to do it for the whole year or the whole quarter. So it's, it's kinda hard to do specific reports that we want.
Cause the lighting's after, I confused.
Let's see. What's the initial payout for Harris?
I, honestly, it was installed a long time ago, so I really couldn't compare.
So it's just kinda hanging out eventually?
Yes, the programs are really like twenty years back. They're really old, and then, I mean, one of my major things I've noticed is that they don't communicate well. So we have to go into one, one program, and then go into another. What we'd really like to do is just have them all integrated and communicating with each other, and it would just make our jobs a lot easier.
So is any of these, these companies here, you guys are more interested in than the other?
We really like Accufund and Tyler Technologies.
And if you know some of the personal ones, eh? Oh, they are the most expensive ones, of course.
Well, Williamson Law, we didn't get good feedback on.
No.
Accufund, Joe and I had attended an actual class, a two-hour presentation of the program, where we actually were literally, the screen was as big as this picture here. And they showed us exactly, you know, the kinds of reports, I can be wrong. They took an invoice and entered it, and showed us what reports it shows up on. I very much like the Accufund programs, very user-friendly. There are many different types of reports you can produce and access more easily than what we have now. Tyler also had a great present, presentation. They did probably a week or two after the one Joe and I attended. I think they have too many bells and whistles that we don't really need to pay for, because they are such a huge company. They service many municipalities all across the country. They have about 4,000 employees or so, just in their company. So, yes, they probably would be wonderful, but one, I think the price will be a bit higher. Not only initially, but annually, their support is about $10,000, which is what we're currently paying. And Accufund's annual service is approximately $5,000, so that's half.
I'm happy to go with Accufund as well. I, I personally like Tyler a little bit better, but they are more expensive. What I, what I did like about, I, I'm fine going with Accufund, but there's, I do have a few questions. This is obviously just very, we just, you know, we just really compiled this. I have a few issues with Accufund, and, but if those are fine, then I'm fine, I'm fine with Accufund as well. But I just had heard some rumors that they, they have a very, very, very small staff, and that the customer service was not great with them either, because they have, they have like fifteen employees. So, but they are local, so, and I've heard that they have been improved, and they've got more employees. So I just wanna know for sure, am I ask a couple of their villages or, you know?
That's what I was gonna ask you, if you guys, to ask who else is doing it.
They, they actually don't service any villages. They service the city of Milo, which recently started with them, specifically this past January. And I have a testimonial from that person I can share with you. And they also just installed their program at University of Buffalo Foundation. They implemented their program there also, and I can share, I'll pass these out to you also, so you can read the testimonial from that company also.
Yeah, but have you guys reached out?
To, I have not had a chance to do that yet.
They can come up with testimonials and...
Absolutely, absolutely, no. I have her contact information, town of Milo. And actually, she was even at the presentation that we went to, I don't know, it was March or something? Yeah, no, six months.
I'd love to talk to someone that actually has similar, like village, or something like that. I'd, I'd like to talk to someone like that.
We've been talking about this for a while, I think, so is there anything in the budget line for this?
This won't happen until June, June of nineteen, so no, we don't have it in this year's budget.
Okay, good to know.
The plan is to get it for the next, but we need to start now, so that we can implement it. Ideally, to get it, we really should start June 1st, because that's when our, when our fiscal year starts. Starting at mid-season, will really mess things up, because we'll have two sets of different kind of books going on, so...
And they'll come here and do training on something like that?
Yes, absolutely.
What are the other, yeah, what are the other towns and villages used?
Harris.
That's what I was gonna say, they're old and...
Yeah.
It's very antiquated, and yes, if you recall, when I was interviewed four years ago, the first thing, the four, four or five of you had said, "Well, we've heard that the program here isn't very good." And of course, I'm, "Oh, sure, that'll be the first thing I do for ya." Well, no. I have to learn it first. And I'm just under, not just, I mean, I figured it out pretty quick. One accounting program is very similar to another accounting program. But Harris is very outdated, I must say. And Tyler and Accufund are very user-friendly. Something as simple as screen presentation is better than Harris. Harris, I need to use a micro, microscope sometimes to read some of the reports, and some of the screenshots of what is occurring. So just to see a better presentation of my data entry sheets, my reports, is huge.
And they've seen some of the reports we send them from, and they're just...
I mean, I deal, I work in the program every day, and to see just for two hours what a different program can do for me, was just phenomenal. So I'm excited to start moving on this project. Once we do a little bit more research, we'd like to get some major decisions made.
What kind of a timeframe is there for initiating the startup and transferring records?
Well, I'm sure we're gonna have to start working on that beginning of next year, 2019, provided that, you know, everyone's on board, and, and some decisions are made as to what direction we go in. Because the sooner we start, the easier it'll be to go live on June 1st.
So you would run both programs, take the same thing?
For a little bit, probably so.
We have to.
Yeah.
What's the cost, like, about fifty thousand, is that the initial?
I'm gonna turn it over now to my, my in-depth analysis person on these costs. She, she picked it apart from each way.
Well, at the, at the time we put this together, we didn't have exact figures from Tyler that included the payroll piece. So that's why you'll see the initial expense is about $47,387.
Which I did update that, but I don't have the payroll.
Okay.
And that actually jumps up to seventy-four total.
Yeah, to add, add the payroll piece, it was quite a jump. Where the, the main difference with Accufund is that they will give us quite scattered prices, or different prices, depending on how many users you will have using the program. So that's why you'll see across from Accufund, that first line, it is for two concurrent users. And then the next line for three, and the last one for four users.
Right now, we have four users for Microfund, and two users for Property Tax, because there's never a need for more than two people to be in the Property Tax program at a time anyways. And as far as four users for the program, for our cash register, and for our financial statements, it's never necessary to have more than four people in there at a time anyways.
Very good, so more to come, I guess.
Absolutely, yes. Please keep this in mind, and talk amongst yourselves when you see one another. We're very excited to, to move to a new program, so that it'll make everyone, even the presentation to you on a monthly basis will be better.
Well, Paige, you said we talked about this a long time.
Yes.
We even talked about it before, John, so I mean, it's not like...
Even something as simple as voiding a check out of the program. With Harris, we can't do that. We have to call...
Which is...
To have customer service on their end go into our system and void a check. And that, that's how, when Chris says how antiquated it is, that's what we're, things we're dealing with.
And when we have an issue, and she's not hearing back for days, I mean, it's just not...
Yeah, that's true.
Not okay.
No.
One, one last question, do they, does Accufund have a setup where you can actually go use it? You know, like try, try the shoe on before you buy it?
I'm sure they would be open to having us do that. They, EF Openberg, if you're familiar with that accounting firm, they are located on Lehigh Station Road, I believe, right as 490 ends. Or 390 or...
390.
390 ends, right off the expressway. A, a majority of the clients that they have use Accufund, and the accountants there do use it. So I'm sure if we asked, we could certainly go there and try it out.
Suggest you would do that.
Another good thing that Chris actually pointed out today was that most of the people who work for Harris aren't, don't have an accounting background.
And that's, that's very important. I mean, if I was, yeah. I mean, sometimes when I'm working, I'm not sure how familiar you are with debits and credits, but my trial balance will be off a certain dollar amount. And, you know, there's nothing I can do. A one-sided entry has to be made, and I said, "Well, a debit is missing, because my credit side is correct."
What? They don't understand.
That's not the answer I need, or that I want to hear from you, so...
And both Tyler and Accufund are, they're...
Have financial backgrounds, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
As you continue to think about this and talk amongst yourselves, if you come up with questions that we haven't thought of, or you want answers, to please email us, so that we can, one, find out for you, and two, it'll help us in our research process.
You can leave it online, of course.
Well, you really, you put it all online, exactly what you need.
We want, we know what we want, yeah.
It just sounds like you, like you're almost working on, you know, old paperwork for you, you know?
Taking the plunging, the difficult part.
Oh, and the other point is too, that would be, will be huge, is the current setup of the accounts that we use here at the village aren't the setup that the state comptroller requires. The accounts for New York State start with a letter, so our general fund is an A, and then it's four, four numbers. That's how all accounting programs are set up, except for Harris. So not only...
But they call that out behind the reports?
Has who?
The comptroller.
Well, no, because Fred Mexick does our audit, and our, does our AUD. They convert everything for us, they already have it set up in the program. So, but not only will we be moving our data from Harris into the new program, but we will also be creating a new list of account numbers. So it's a very complicated move, so the more time we have to do it, that's gonna be very important. And not only that, we'll have budgets coming up at that time too.
Exactly.
So, time is very crucial, we don't wanna wait on this too long.
Yep, we'll keep it going.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next discussion around the trick-or-treat trail.
What's your costume gonna be this year?
A costume? I could be a gallbladder.
You're gonna be dangerous.
Are you gonna, are you gonna throw stones?
Peter Elder.
That is very proud eater.
So, we already have you down for the table out front, but...
I'm gonna be here for the food.
Okay, well, we need registration table, Jude, you had mentioned wanting to do that, right?
Whatever, you told me that I would.
And then we need judge receivable.
Put Carl at the donuts, consider. Now I can't...
Well, Megan's got that.
You're gonna dump the apples on it.
We think we're okay, we've got a few ideas, but we definitely want, just wanted to know what, what you folks wanted to do.
Well, you know what I'm doing.
I know what you're doing, yeah, did you, did you want to...
I have jobs in the past, and I'm with my daughter.
Yeah, we, we have a few names that we had put down. We thought Billy Horace might want to do a judge, be a judge, no?
Well, if, if you're committing tonight to being a judge, just put your name down, and then make sure we...
We need to hear like eleven, right?
About quarter to eleven, it's October 27th.
How about a couple of firemen, say something?
Cause they're in open house.
Well, they do Saturday, they have their open house the same day, so...
You got two judges in town, and we got one of them.
Oh, Jane, I'm sorry, you know, wouldn't that be...
We used to do one every year.
Tom is a judge. As a judge.
He might be out of town.
I am gonna contact David Portori.
Yeah, I would.
I spoke with him last year, and he said... He, he said last year that he would do it, so as long as he's got that day open.
Well, just tell him I said that he really needs to do it.
Yeah. The twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seven.
Sure, he's gonna pull all our money out.
Yeah.
All right, we've got Al down, Jerry's down for the candy out front, Jude's down for registration table.
I'll be a candy man.
You wanna go out front?
Here, there's no room now, there's no room, Carl.
Well, there was a, there was a place here.
Thought Judy was.
Yeah, I, yeah, we, yeah.
All right.
I'll be the, the runner.
Yeah, we need him.
Utility guy.
I like it.
I'll be the runner.
The runner?
The candy runner?
Are we doing milk bones for the... For the dogs?
I'll be the taste tester.
A milk bone?
We have...
That's about all I can eat.
We've, we've had information back and forth that they were speaking about doing a dog contest this year.
They are.
Yeah, I heard it was happening.
Do we know where that contest is gonna take place?
I think someone in the audience wrote this.
I am, I am coordinating with Webster Vet, I'm gonna get the, we're gonna get the details tomorrow or Thursday, but probably tomorrow. And so our, the plan right now, this is preliminary, would be that the, the group of all the people with all the dogs, and it could be quite a lot of people, depending, would meet out front at Village Hall, somewhere around 12:30, that grassy area out there. Or we could, or the other thing we've done in the past is met in the actual, you know, paved area, because we block it off. So it's pretty safe for people to meet out there. So we'd meet that, so once...
Might be better to do that, because isn't that table with candy still going on at that time?
Probably, so we can meet...
So we got all those dogs there, it's fine.
We could do it here, but we, we have to have some common meeting place. We've typically met on Main Street, but, just because it's a lot nicer, but, and the, and the street is closed now. So it's like, so what we, what we would do, the plan would be to meet out there, and then we'd all gather together somewhere around 12:30. There'll be like a dog march down, down East Main, around the corner, down to the park. And then the park is where the, the judging will go on for the dogs. And then we would award prizes for second and third for the best dog costumes. So that's, that's sort of the plan that we're working with now. I can give you a better, firmer idea of how that program's gonna go, as soon as I get done with the, better discussions with the vet. But we'd like to really do that walk down, because it's kinda cool, in terms of that little doggy parade, so... And the streets, and unlike in the past, where the street was not closed, we did this last time, now we have the street to work with, so, which is cool.
Jake, are you thrilled about the pooper-scooper part of this?
No, that's what I was just gonna say, make sure, let us know where people are gonna be. We're gonna have another, we ordered a additional muppets.
Okay.
So we'll try to have a, a station there, so people can be able to pick up after their...
Excellent.
Their fluffy there.
And then, obviously, the plan would be for the trail to start at around noon. We usually try to, we, we assume that people will probably go out, because they have in the past before noon. But we'll probably tell them, you know, the official start of the trick-or-treat trail is right around noonish. And then, we said 11:30 before, but I'm just gonna go with 12, because it might be easier this way. And then they would, so they would start out right after the costume contest. Cause usually the costume contest winners are announced about 11:45 or so. So it's kind of a nice integration there, and then everybody would go around, it ends, ends at three o'clock. So that's kinda how that works. And usually by 2:30, it's pretty, it's kinda sparse out there, but for the first...
Last year, last year was...
For the first two, for the first two hours, it's crazy, so... And Jake said that the wagon is good, so we're good there. And so I think it will all come together there, so... We're signing up businesses, I already got people signed up. I'll be doing my signups more for this week and next week. I'll have probably everything done by next Friday, so, as far as signups go.
Now, is the bid going to take care of the prizes for the, the dog contest?
Yeah, well, we'll either have the, yeah, they mean, there's a, I haven't asked that question, but, but I think that the answer would be that they have a, they, they probably have, they have, they have absolutely, they actually have money in their budget to do this. So we could do, we could either use that, or in the past, we had people pay for different parts of the, donate the prizes for the dogs. So either way it goes, we'll see, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
And then also, to help in collecting prizes from the businesses, I know last year, your wife helped quite a bit with that.
Yeah, she's, and I'd asked her, and I asked her before I came over here tonight, and she said she would do it, so...
Thank you.
So you're all set there, so...
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, so she will, she'll work with that, and, and of course, if I go to a business that I'm talking to to sign them up, I'll ask them about the prizes too, so kinda work on that, sort of together. We know we need the prizes, so if we're already there, we might as well hit them up for both, so...
Yeah, that's a huge help.
Yeah, no problem, we can do that. And how many, how many, you do first, second, and third in four categories, right?
We total, there's...
Twelve.
Twelve, yes. But we do first, like first and second for most original, first and second for scariest. And then we've got the zero to five-year-olds, six to twelve-year-olds, and then family.
Okay. We can do that, yep, absolutely. So we think, usually it comes together pretty well, so we, I don't, I don't foresee any real, real problems this time. I know there's a lot of interest in the businesses, because I very rarely have ever gotten emails before, but I'm getting emails now, so they're obviously really wanna do it, which is great, and so...
Well, did, did you wanna say something at the bid meeting on Tuesday?
Yes, I will.
Would you?
Yeah, we won't actually have a bid meeting till the end of the month, I don't think.
Oh, I thought we were having...
There's a bid meeting coming up.
Oh, is there, what, what date is that?
Yeah, the next week on Tuesday, I believe.
Next week on Tuesday, yes, then I will, okay, absolutely. In fact, I'll sign people up then, too.
I didn't know where it was.
Beyond cuts.
Beyond cuts, okay, all right, thank you.
I'll be there, so I hope to...
All right, yeah, I will, I, yeah, that's, yeah, so of course, I'll say something there, and I can sign people up there, talk about the plans, and everything like that, but...
So thank you for being in the audience and answering our questions.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Peter.
Absolutely.
So anyone else, any more questions, or you guys got anything more about that?
We're working on all the setup items. Megan today was printing out the number labels for all the kids, and, and sheets for the judges, so we're...
Sure to look at you guys, always do a nice job setting it up, so it's good. And I, I, we did sign you up, sir, to be a judge. Heather said you may not be here, but I said, "Let's sign him up anyway."
I may not, but I will be here with the new, I need to...
Yes, he has a new costume.
Oh, I'm curious to see what that'll be. All right, so I'm gonna turn this over to you now, you can, we're, we're on the employee review discussion.
I don't know if Heather has had any thought, if you could respond back, as of this afternoon, she has said she has not. I believe Heather, you did talk, however, we had a night con, or at night con, in one of those sessions regarding employee performance, and we provided some feedback to you.
Yes, they, I shared my idea of meeting, because they just meet once, they share that, what they do at night con, and they only meet once a year. And I actually said that we had discussed meeting more than once, to, you know, because things change, objectives might change, and they, they actually really liked that idea, and they said they were gonna steal it, so... So that was good, yeah, thank you, Gary.
You're the leading edge now.
They're, they gave us an example, it was like five pages long, and very wordy. I still really liked what we came up with better, but I can share what they said, in case there's any ideas you might like to pull from it. Sure. But I can email that out.
This includes the public, do you go with employees that Jake stays?
No, he'll be using his own...
Is it just office stay?
Yes, and I, Mayor Byers mentioned that he will be using it with Jake and I, and Will as well.
Okay. No, I, I didn't, I told Heather I didn't have any more questions, because I think she's, it's going to...
It's all good.
And what's best about this review process is you're really doing it with the employees, it's not just a paper, piece of paper, and you read them on something. You guys are creating objectives together, and, and...
Oh, and the other thing they recommended, and I liked the idea, was to, as soon as, if a new, a new hire, give this to them right away, even possibly putting in the handbook, so there's no surprises. Sending it out to them, just so you know, we're gonna be meeting, this is what, this is what you're gonna be looking at. They did not like the idea of doing it together, though. They said they hated that, but I still thought it's better to get both sides in your, as a discussion. I still, I think I like that better.
Yeah.
They said it puts people, makes people feel uncomfortable, I guess, but I feel like it gives you ownership, and...
I, yeah, because within, within Xerox, we did an awful lot of that, and we, we did it together.
Right, and it gives you an opportunity to advocate for yourself as well, something that you might not...
Well, and sometimes you need to have a third party, man.
Yeah, that's what I would think.
Because, yeah, because sometimes it's adversarial, and so...
And the ultimate goal...
You agree about the objectives, eh?
Right, the ultimate goal is for everyone to succeed, you don't want no one to fail, so that's, that's why you do a system like that. So you're communicating throughout the year, instead of just once, and then at the end, the employee fills out that you failed at this, this, and this, what do you mean? We never talked about it through the years. So this gives you that opportunity.
What about shared objectives?
Well, if you find an objective, at least where I am, and maybe I'll just speak to it too, if you find an objective that fits the whole team, you can have an objective for the whole team. And then you could have some personalized, then you could have someone that is created by an individual, so... But it's, I, I will be able to communicate, collaboration with your...
Thank you all for your input and help on this, I appreciate it. I just wanted, because not everyone was able to make the last meeting, so I just wanted to give everyone an opportunity, if they wanted to share something again. I didn't single you out. And then Jake, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, because Daryl had said he was gonna be doing it on us too, so...
Hold on.
You got a thumbs up, Daryl.
Well, what is the office stand when I show everything?
Good question.
You agree with that?
It was a while ago that they looked at it, so I...
I was gonna say, I haven't looked, they looked at this version, so...
No, we haven't seen it, the only thing that, because they're very far, it's left for...
Yeah.
They gave me some really great feedback, the first set, for the first initial submission. And then we obviously revamped it completely, so they'll need to look at it again, but...
I like short and sweet, I think it's really good.
I thought the other one was pretty long, you know? That was actually some of their concerns. A little more, a little... A little more, a little shorter, okay, I'll work on that.
Make sure it says over at the bottom of the page.
Oh, and actually, one other thing that they did say was that you wanna put them little, you wanna put as little information as possible about the employee themselves, in terms of their name, date of birth, and stuff like that, cause this document actually would be foilable.
It is.
It was true.
Yeah.
That would, that would be considered an employee record?
You can basically add stuff out, but it's still foilable, and that's reporting to night con.
So would anything in the employee records?
I didn't ask about that, but specifically this.
Because this is an employee record, I think so.
Right, right.
So if you, if they're off to employee records, they should not be able to investigate.
I mean, we looked, Joe and I, when we got it foiled a while ago, there was personal information on there. And, you know, we were, we were thinking, we don't wanna send this out, this has got someone's information on it, and, I mean, technically, it still can be, it just needs to be.
Redacted.
Redacted, but, um, there was a couple of caveats where you could, you were excused from sending it if it posed personal harm or something like that to the person, but.
I think, yeah, I think that is a good Donna question, this is curious.
I can't imagine that that could be foiled, cause then you could get article records, I mean.
Yeah, exactly.
That doesn't sound right.
Yeah, I mean, I, that was directly from night con, so I can, I can, um, double check with them too.
And I think Daryl will, but Donna talked to Donna, cause that's personnel, I think that's. If you don't have more of all.
You can, you can foil it.
You can.
But you have to redact it.
Yeah.
You can't foil medical, because medical has other, there's other laws that cover medical.
And medical is also.
Can't do that.
The foil guru was there, and he did say.
But then, what's the point of someone foiling it? If you're, well, no, let me finish, if, if they, if you redact the name, what are they foiling then?
Great.
It doesn't, it wouldn't happen often.
Great question.
That is a great question.
It wouldn't really happen often.
But I don't think they have the, they wouldn't even have the answer to that.
They might just.
Alright, cause if you can redact it, well then.
They probably would.
Then what, what are you looking at?
They probably would just, they might just be foiling something as simple as seeing if you actually do it, if I'm saying, so.
But one was, I wanted Peter's performance appraisal, and then you cross off Peter's name.
And they know it's a different.
Probably insinuate who it was, and say, I mean, you can, you can tell, I'm telling you this, about, even if you reject the name, so that's.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Kids are, it's not gonna happen, but it is foiled.
Government employees are afforded a whole lot less protection under foil, so, a whole lot less.
It's kinda what you sign up for when you're in government.
Yep.
Alright, so, and you, you, you think we have to vote on this?
I would, I would, if, if, if you haven't gone through this.
No, I have, we have.
If you have gone through the version and you are fine with it, then we would move forward with this and put this in place. It is different, and I think that it is better than the one that we have currently in place.
There has that one in place.
That's what he said, that's what he means. There is one on the system.
There is, it's been used once.
It's never been used on me.
Nope, it was only once in five years.
Oh.
Yep.
So that's about right, but you could vote to add this to the handbook, though.
Hard to.
Could you vote to add this into the handbook?
That's what he said.
Yes.
Okay.
So that, so that it is out there to be available, and it's not a hidden thing.
Policy number X.
But, but, um, in the handbook, it definitely states that there will be an evaluation at least once a year. It states that, but it's not been done. So in terms of having this, uh, changed, because Heather was not in favor of the one that I pulled out to use, um, and this has, uh, this obviously changed greatly. Um, I think that there needs to be, um, something, we need to call it a policy.
And is there anywhere on the top of, you know, where you had, it just says review date? I'm wondering if you put employee performance review year, so your fiscal year from this date to this date. So when someone, if you do look back at this, it just says it was reviewed on that date, but it should show.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming this would be done in the month of, oh, actually, it should be done in January or so, March at the very latest.
Yeah, we wanna start, we wanna start, it's just we've been working on it.
Because those dollar figures are going to impact the budget, so you really need to have it done by the end of February, actually.
Technically, just so you know, technically, you can't, this would have nothing to do with raises.
Okay.
Um, if you want to do, it's very, very difficult, and I just learned this actually, um, you would have to, the, oh, they recommend not doing that. Especially, usually in other places, yes, but in government, um, they recommend not doing that.
You would have to establish a, a complete rubric for this.
Yes, exactly, and they recommend, they really recommend not doing that.
So it can be supporting document if a raise is a good or raise is good, right here, if someone has poor performance, and it's indicated on this, they're gonna get the same increase um, as someone who performed really well, so, you know, is that, I think they have to hand, hands of, does this indicate a percentage yet, no? But it should have something to do with.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak exactly to the specifics, but we, they did bring this up with, um, I, I don't know if it was OSC, I can't remember, but they did say, and I will, I'm gonna find this out, cause I actually have a, I have a meeting scheduled with one of the night con members, but technically, you really can't not give someone, it, it, it's, it's a little bit, it's difficult.
No, and I, and I get what you're saying, it's, it's a whole different piece, but I understand, if you have years and years of, of poor performance reviews.
Yeah.
With increases, to me, you're, you're, you're collecting data that isn't working together, you know, and they're kind of looking at each other and what you're doing, so.
Well, this is what I actually bring up, brought up at the meeting that we had about this, I was just like, I don't understand, people who have self-incentive, they shouldn't just be, you know, you don't want someone just expecting a raise just because, you wanna feel like they earned it, people, you know, people feel better about that, and unfortunately, it's very difficult to do it that way.
Interesting. What's the alter?
As you put it, years and years of poor performance were constantly there, that it's not positive.
Then you go, yeah, abruptly.
Without a union contract, that's a different ballgame.
Yes.
I'm saying, we're changing.
I mean, it, it can always help, it's obviously never gonna be detrimental to not have these in the file and, so. They were also surprised that there weren't, um, that steps were never done, they were very surprised that that wasn't, that was taken away. So I've got a call out to talk, talk to them about that as well, and I will update you.
What would they put in place, Peter, just to, if you remember, was it prior to you?
No, they never, the personnel in the office never had steps prior to.
We did.
In the office?
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't remember, I don't remember when you were, I don't remember when you were mayor, there being steps in the office, cause we just, they were the big.
There is, files.
Okay.
There's pay charts and salary charts that go back.
So then it just stopped?
Oh, no, it's because, oh, I, I'm sorry, those are the eight and a half by eleven, they just have those little tiny steps on them? You're right, they were, they did exist, I'm sorry, I, I apologize, they did exist, there was a sheet of paper that they had with like five, well, they had four or five steps on them, and they were like all bundled up in one eight and a half by eleven. But then what we did is, we went through at great length, and then redid all those step tables, and made it so there were steps, and then half steps, and, you know, we, you were there for that.
Yeah, there were eight steps before, and then you made it.
Like six.
Ten steps.
Right.
But you made them half each, so there were really only five steps.
Right, cause the idea was that people could get, well, because we got caught up in the same thing Jerry was talking about, how do you, how do you actually deal with performance reviews? So we were thinking, well, you have, and Al, you were there, we, as well, we had, like, sometimes you've got a step, sometimes you got a half step. Depends on the performance review, but everybody would get some kind of step, kind of thing going on. So, but it, cause obviously we wanted the performance review to reflect the steps.
Right, I agree.
Which, and then if you, if you have steps, then you can do it, and just, very.
Right, but you've gotta have something, you gotta have something that's objective, otherwise it looks completely arbitrary, so, cause it is, so.
Then you open yourself for a lot of issues.
That's right.
And ones and, and not, so.
That's why I got some audio document now.
Yes.
So how did we deal with percent increase over here?
How did we deal with it? We dealt, we dealt with it, we dealt with it in the best way we could.
In other words, if there's a percent increase, it goes, um, it goes towards the base, and then there's a certain amount that, that amount is added, not, I'm on step eight or I'm at this, so this is my three percent. There's a certain amount that everybody gets.
Right.
And then you have a step or whatever.
That's an addition to that, yeah.
What, what the.
Because that's what's going on right now, when you take a look at the school board, okay? Make a hundred and, two hundred and ten thousand dollars, and you get a five percent raise, whoa! And somebody else making forty-six thousand dollars gets a five percent raise, and not even close.
Right, yeah.
So there has to be some kind of, but anyways, but, um, there has to be some handout.
Jake, actually Jake, go ahead, cause you were just about to say what we, what happened.
What they, they used to do, it was, in, in the, the union contract still follows this, um, there's a cost of living increase, and it, that impacts the whole chart, if you will. So when, when it was based on the CBIW, if that was, you know, two percent, the whole chart would go up by two percent, and the steps would maintain that, they would start out, you know, three percent different, let's say, if that's where the steps were arranged. And then the whole chart would move up for the cost of living, so even if someone stayed in the same, you know, many offices or governmental agencies will have a, you know, a G four, or a, whatever their, uh, pay scale is. Um, but that whole chart moves to reflect the cost of living, so if there's no increase, it would go up, there would still be an increase, it would go up by the cost of living, if there was a change in the cost of living.
But the office staff isn't covered by that, that same criteria, so.
No, 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 I'm saying, just saying, that's how it was, that's what we do, that's what the union contract follows.
So you can choose to not give the cost of livings, and there were times where we debated how that cost of living would impact the, the steps, and boy, did we debate it.
At least they give the, like, to make the data, I'm sure they'll come to us again, but.
Alright.
Jerry, we will, we have with us.
Yes.
We got the sewer.
So are you gonna put this on the agenda, add this, or vote to put it in the handbook?
I don't think we could put it in the handbook.
No?
I mean, well, we could vote on putting it in the handbook, but I don't know.
If we even need to.
One has an append, we could, we could do it, that's an append, an appendix, right Jake? Because isn't the one that is in the union contract, is that an appendix, the performance review?
Yes, it's, yeah, it's referenced in there, and there's a, you know, a policy, so if something goes in the policy manual, and I wonder if, you were talking about the documentary things, I wonder if it is best to say, you know, it's a policy to try to meet three times a year, let's say, develop the performance appraisal, and use the one found in the FedExG or whatever it is, or adapt to that policy. I wonder if that's good, cause then it leaves it all for everybody that are gonna have their reviews at the same time.
Yep.
I'm sorry, they're doing that by itself?
We don't have money to budget from chair this year.
Technical difficulties.
Alright. Well, let's come up with some wording for that, for the policy manual, but we will use this, and then we'll put it as an appendix. Um, moving on then, right? Uh, the, um, quick discussion on the joint sewer study. That was sent out again to everyone, uh, if you need to, Jake, did you get, I don't know if it was different, I look forward to hearing again what was sent to me and then sent to Will.
It did, I reached, I reached out to Clem, cause it didn't contain the appendices, the appendices, I guess, are twenty-four, a gig, a mega, whatever, some sort of size.
The one I sent, you did not have them?
It didn't have the appendices, and I, I think most of those are summarizing tables, but I could try to reach out to the town, see if I get a hard copy.
Well, you're interested in that.
Yeah.
I had the executive session, or the executus.
Yes.
Summary, as well as his longer one, which is a couple hundred pages.
Yeah, I, I had both of those, and it's just that, you know, it references, you know, different charts and data sets, yeah.
Okay, um, and at any rate, it has, um, been proposed by the town that we meet together, uh, joint board to, um, discuss, um, the sewer study. The, um, engineers for B and L already made a presentation in the workshop to the town, I reached out to the supervisor, I said, we would like to have, uh, the engineers of B and L come here, Peter Baker and his boss, and give us the same presentation, so that we're in full footing, and that we have a chance to ask questions, uh, as they may have.
So, but, that first, you wanna do that first?
They are coming here, uh, on our next workshop, that workshop will be October thirtieth, Tuesday, October thirtieth. We will have a presentation to the board, uh, by B and L, um, and we can ask questions, so if you have worked through everything, uh, at that particular point in time, if you have questions, and, uh, you need them answered, we have an opportunity to do that, okay? And then, um, we will have a joint session on November, where's it now, November twenty-ninth, that's a Thursday night, and we will meet at the, um, uh, town boardroom. They would like to broadcast it to the community, and I have no problem with that, in fact, if we have opportunity, we will, we will do something as well. But, um, I did wanna have us not go into that meeting without having the opportunity to get the same information and to ask questions, okay? And since it's a joint study, and we're putting money into it, they certainly agree to come, okay? So on the thirtieth, so look things over, um, I've tried to forward you things that have come to me, so that you are apprised of what I'm getting, and, um, and then look it over and ask, formulate your own question. So that's, uh, that's where we are headed, they, as you may know already, did approve their first phase of, um, their sewer rehab, which was for twelve million dollars. And they're moving ahead with that, uh, it is something that they have to do, whether you join or not. The second phase is twenty-eight million total, um, that includes the first twelve, twenty-eight million total, um, without town only and Petis, and regional, if they call it, three million, so.
Just we should do a little cost analysis for this group to, to show the difference.
We can look back, we can look back at the study that we were given, that was presented to the village, and.
Information there on the sewer study. Very good.
Okay.
That's it.
Um, Mr. Elder, did you speak to Edgar, Edgar Struck Memorial earlier?
I wasn't able to, uh, get you written quotes yet, so probably by Thursday night, I'll have them.
He asked for that to be on the agenda.
Yeah, I thought perhaps, I thought I probably perhaps would have it, but it didn't work out, so.
Do we, do we have to do a budget modification? It would have to be a, cause there's not enough in the historical.
We're short about a hundred and fifty dollars.
I can run a partner's.
To me, that would be incentive for whoever gets the bid to reduce their price by that dollar amount. It's only a hundred and fifty dollars.
Can you, can you explain that just a little bit? You said it's.
The budget for the preservation commission is eleven hundred dollars.
Right.
So in order to allow, quote, for the expense, the incentive would be to the person who wins the bid to simply, as a gift in kind, give the hundred and fifty dollars to the village in their services.
Okay.
That would be my thought process.
Cause it would get done faster?
Well.
Then it's a matter of, just, yeah, we don't have to come before the board.
Matter of money.
It's a budget of, of, we wouldn't have to come before the board.
Budget, yeah, we would have to, we'd have to find a hundred and fifty dollars, we could take it from the historical preservation line.
That's the line it's coming out of, right?
That's what it's coming out of.
I think so.
No, there's two lines, there's a preservation commission line and a historical contractual line.
That's.
That's, that's Lynn, I think that's the stor, I think that's the historian.
And we could take it from the historian line.
Anybody have a fight on your hands?
Well, that, that would be the other option, is, is whatever company decides, decide to choose, perhaps they would be willing enough to gift in kind plants or time to beautify the village.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Or we could, oh, half a thousand plants. Where we could pull half a thousand plants off and then put those in at a later time and.
There you go.
Yeah.
You know, we have the plant warrant and where they're going to go.
Mm-hmm.
Do those, when the funds are available.
Is this in fact the best time to plant those?
That's what we were told.
And that's, that's slipping away quickly too.
Yeah, we were told, right, which is why we're doing it as quickly as we possibly can. But yes, you're right, it is slipping away. And we were told that the fall is the best time to do the planting.
Yes.
That is correct.
Can you forward to me the joint sewer study, please?
I have it.
I don't send it to us.
I didn't get into it.
Hey, it's, your names, your names are in there. I'm getting it.
I will. I did.
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to read it too.
There are a couple of other things that are not on here. I would just mention to you, there's a meeting October ninth of Kiwanis. They had asked if there was someone who from the board. I responded I could not, I'll be uptown, hopefully at my campus. But they're looking for someone to come to represent the village at the meeting. So I'm just opening up to you again. I sent it out to you, to the board members, so if you want to go, you can respond to the person in the email.
The July.
No longer at, no longer at Hedges, it's now.
It's the, it's the.
Maybe more people.
The beer. I was like, ah, maybe I'll go. July twenty-ninth, scroll down, July twenty-ninth. He sent it in there, July twenty.
October.
And I went to the band.
July.
I meant, I meant. I meant that.
You?
Went to the band on Saturday night.
Okay, good.
I talked to bars.
And they're coming to, to the presentation.
I don't have that. No, it's October.
I'm not sure when, but they were going to come to the board.
Yeah. I'll see Thursday, the Friday, event, or dinner, whatever. Just send it over.
October, like, October.
I'll forward it to you.
I got it from.
I don't have.
There's one other thing.
Let's have it once this happens.
There's one other thing that I would mention to you. A number of years ago, there was an investigation by Mayor Cahill into the cost and the, of dealing with the wells down at Sandbar. We have been approached by Allison Mayor regarding the buildings and the property that's down there. And we will be soon entering into discussions with, with her and her dad, I believe, regarding them. So it was nice for them to reach out. And so I just wanted to let you know that they have and that we're going to try to see what we can do.
We talked about that a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
Years. Jake's turn.
Okay, anything else that you all would bring up?
I do have one other thing. We were, sorry. We were hoping that we could get some new chairs. We want to, we, we have these chairs that we've already bought and we'd like to get a full set. We have a wedding reception and we'd like to have matching chairs. We've slowly been getting the ones with the cushions, they're a little more comfortable.
The companions ones.
Yeah. Yeah. We found a good deal on Amazon.
What?
The color.
Why?
The ones worth.
Yeah, one makes it Peter.
We're sitting on them.
We have, like Jake told, and I've broken it. So we have twenty of those and fifty of the, just the regular metal folding chairs.
I'm sitting on them.
So we've got a total of seventy at this point, but they expect about a hundred people for this wedding reception in November. So.
Excellent.
Here, yes. So instead of having matching chairs for their own reception, it would be nice of magic for by year. And you're from fourteen.
Oh, you can write, you can write in there, but.
Well, that would be nice if we have a transition.
Yeah, we definitely have needed new chairs for a very long time. I just worry about the color and the staining and.
Yeah.
We would prefer to get a different color, but.
Well, but.
Well, we could start over and just use those for us, the board would take, but.
I, I've tried to keep the cushion ones away, other than up here. And size wise, they're ideal for the small meeting room. So I, I, when I talk them away, I leave them back there unless they're going to be.
Well, I know it, but I mean, if we're going to end up buying.
Right, right.
All of the same, then we're using them.
Right.
Twenty-four seven.
We'd rather have the vinyl ones than.
Exactly, I'd much rather have the vinyl darker.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I don't know, did, did we see any of those while you were looking at sales?
Those are the ones that we found on Amazon for like, I mean, it was like ten to twelve dollars a chair. I don't know if it's still that, if you buy in bulk.
Well, but that's what we need, so.
Right, so it was, there were some good deals we found. Chris and I were looking and then we showed Joe and.
They just grabbed a gauge of steel and things like that, so. Because I've destroyed many a chair.
You just won't be able to sit on it.
I, I'm glad it's fine.
Believe it or not, just changing the color sometimes raises the price, just by changing the color. It can be an identical chair.
Oh, I know, I understand that, but still. If it's going to cost us to have, to get them clean or be.
Right, yeah. So I guess the appropriate question really that Heather wanted to ask this evening is, will we be able to use the money out of the contingency line? Because that's really the only place it could come from.
Which we have gotten a lot more reservations for the room. I know it's been, I mean, we, I know that Deputy Mayor Iboito would really like some ones that are rolly, but those are way over.
I'm not, I'm just telling you the typical.
How many are you going to?
I'm hard to find with that. How many?
Like thirty more to, to bring us up to a number that we could, well, but if you're saying, if Heather was saying if they're going to be cheaper in bulk, why don't you shoot for a hundred?
We want to go for a hundred and just replace.
Just get it done now.
Yes.
And then we can put those ones.
It's not in the budget and then we won't have money to put in the budget for next year, so just take the hit now.
Exactly.
And we have, I mean, we, how much money would you say we've brought in from our, from I circle and?
A good amount.
We've brought in a significant amount of money with our reservations with I circle and.
Well, then that's kind of, that's.
It's kind of how I was thinking.
Makes more logic for me, yes.
Twelve hundred dollars there.
We.
If we get, if we get them at twelve a piece, yeah. That'll be hard, but I, you know.
But we'll, we just, if you could think about it, you know.
If it gets us renting this room more often.
It's been rented more than I've ever seen before.
Did Weight Watchers get it?
The last, the last communication she sent was a couple of weeks ago, I think, when I mentioned it. And they wanted to start November second. However, I have not heard of things that, and I guess they had to bring it to, you know, some mayor meeting and, and get approval for that. The downside is they want Saturday mornings, which is okay, but that's when we get more and more requests for that day.
So it's hard for us to say, yeah, you can have it every Saturday, well, we might get, but.
They're only getting.
Well, it's all the same revenue, right? It, it's the same revenue if they.
Well, if, if they committed now and paid payment, then, okay, yeah, you've got it every Saturday morning.
But they haven't.
But they haven't, we don't have any money in hand. So at this point, when people are calling and wanting to use the room.
We don't want to say.
We don't want to say.
We're not going to say no.
Right, right. Are they asking, requesting a smaller or larger room? The large room, just about everybody. For, well, but for Weight Watchers?
This room.
This room. For how long? Could be. Ongoing. No, but I mean, for how long during the day? Oh, it's in the morning, she said, about eight fifteen to ten fifteen. Gee, that's kind of tough though, because if someone wants a graduation party in the afternoon, they can't have the morning.
A lot of days.
Yeah.
Well, they could, they, conservatively, I think they could be in here by eleven, an afternoon group. But we just don't have a commitment yet from Weight Watchers.
We will keep you updated.
I can maybe help you with that.
Okay.
So again, did we answer your question?
Chairs.
Yes. Yes, we can buy them if we get a good deal.
And it'd be nice to the treasure.
All right, I got it.
And be nice to the treasure. One other thing that I did not, I accidentally did not put on this agenda is that there's also a meeting on October twenty-fifth. Ten eleven, ten twenty-five, and ten thirty is one. On the bottom under public guarantees.
So the ten thirty is really a workshop?
Yes.
Not a board meeting?
Correct, that is the November workshop. Because.
Right, exactly.
It's a November workshop.
Let's make sure we all get the dates right. We got a board meeting on the eleventh.
And the twenty-fifth.
And the twenty-fifth.
There's a regular village board meeting and then the workshop is the thirtieth, which is our November workshop.
Right.
Then an extra meeting in the beginning of November at the town, right?
Pardon me?
Then an extra meeting at the beginning of November with.
At the end.
With the town on the twenty-ninth.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So there is time to digest.
You're beyond Thanksgiving.
Good use of words.
Digest.
You mean digest, right, Peter?
Digestor.
And then clarify it.
Yeah, clarify it.
Well, we do have to be out, but. All right, we're good?
Yeah, we're good. So if there's nothing else, then I would ask for motion to adjourn. I believe that it is currently eight o'clock.
Very good.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, and good night.
So there are, okay, I.
Good answer.
There's no set. And there's been less than a session. And so how do we figure, if these are going to request a raise or what?
I know.
So that's a very far.
And what's this?
Oh, he does stuff. I'm top.
So I don't know.
Well, usually it's a wonderful, well, the reason why. She's not shared, so it's now front line. Anyone that knows what's in the say.
What I talked about once.
You goes to it. Oh, yeah, probably all of the January ones. I probably saw that everywhere and because the rest of them. Want to see if it's on the. So that it's probably. I thought that.
There are trucks here probably every day out.
But you did one time.
Oh, I. Yeah, I'm.
I believe in writing one. So this is where I. Yeah.